Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 24th, 2018 Lebanon City Council meeting. Councilman Fleming, will you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the roll call of members. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Okay. Councilman Kin-- sorry, hold on one second. On the wrong date. Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilman Fleming.
Present.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from previous meeting. Any changes, edits to the previous minutes meetings?
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. I think it was Brent. And Councilman Fleming, we'll have you abstain.
Aye.
Okay. All those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. All right, moving on to old business. Any old business come for the board?
Not for me.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first item I have up here is Resolution 2018-33, which is a confirming Resolution 2018-31, and determining that the qualifications of an economic revitalization area have been met. This is a public hearing, so we'll hold a public hearing on this resolution. Have the city attorney shine, introduce the resolution for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Resolution 2018-33, and it's a confirmatory resolution of 2018-31, determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met. As you recall, at the last meeting, we heard the declaratory resolution in pursuant to the act. This council may find that a particular area within the jurisdiction of the city is an economic revitalization area, and may by adoption of a resolution declare such area to be an economic revitalization area. This council adopted its Resolution 2018-31, again, that's the declaratory resolution, on September 10th, 2018, declaring the area whose boundaries are located within the corporate boundaries of the city, more particularly described on Exhibit A, as well as with the map that's shown on Exhibit B, to be an economic revitalization area. This council is caused to be publish a notice pursuant to the act and Indiana Code, including the notice that the council would hold a public hearing this evening in accordance with the act, which notice was published at least 10 days prior to the date of this public hearing. This council is caused to be filed a copy of the notice and the declaratory resolution with the Boone County assessor and the officers of each taxing unit within the city at least 10 days prior to the date of the public hearing. And we will hear during the public hearing any remonstrances or objections from interested persons, and this resolution will dictate that and find that this council, that the area is located within the corporate boundaries of the city, this area is undesirable for or impossible for normal development, and because of the lack of development, age, obsolescence, substandard buildings, or other factors which have impaired the values would prevent normal development or use of the property as defined in the code, and that this Resolution 2018-31 adopted by the council on September 10th, 2018, is hereby confirmed and approved. This resolution shall be in full force effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions from council before I open up the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, I would open the public hearing on Resolution 2018-33. If you have any comments, please refer to step forward and share those with us. You're good, John? Messenger in the back? He's just nodding to me, so. All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2018-33. Further discussion from council?
Yes, sir.
We also have Ben Worrell here from the EDC if there's other any questions. Okay, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-33 at this time.
So moved?
So moved to?
Second.
I don't know what you're moving to do.
Oh, Resolution 2018-33.
Moved to adopt?
Moved to adopt.
We have motion to adopt Resolution 2018-33. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2018-33 passes unanimously. Sorry, Keith, I gotta know what you're moving to.
That's fine. I understand that.
All right, next is Resolution 2018-32, which is a resolution concerning the adoption of the Boone County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have Chief Bats with us here tonight to explain why we have this resolution.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a moment, give you a brief synopsis of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Boone County Hazard Mitigation Plan is the guide for the county's assessment of hazards, vulnerabilities, and risks. The plan includes the participation of a wide variety of stakeholders, including the public. The public's involved with building the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This aids the county and cities and towns in recouping and recovering cost if there was a disaster. So this plan is put in place so if we would have a disaster in our area, that we would be able to go to FEMA and be able to apply for grants that would be necessary to rebuild infrastructure within the city and the county. So not only does the city of Lebanon participate, it's done on the township and the town level with Zeinsville and Whitestown advance. So FEMA requires local governments to develop and adopt this hazardous mitigation plan. So they can look at all different kinds of areas, potential for flooding, potential for tornado, looking at waterways and how disaster would impact waterways, anything that could affect our city from a social or economic point of view with a disaster. So this plan is rebuilt approximately every five years. This is the first time that I've been involved with it as chief and the city of Lebanon's representative for the emergency planning portions of the mitigation plan. Does anyone have any questions about the plan? And it's 173-page document. It was real page-turner and I did not bring it with me. This is, like I said, just a brief synopsis of this. So by you approving this resolution, we would be able to apply for necessary FEMA grants, essentially.
So just to clarify for those in the audience watching at home, so every town municipality within Boone County all has the same plan?
Yes.
And then we all pass this resolution to say we sign on to it, so to speak?
Exactly. It's an identical plan for every municipality, for every town, and we just need a universal adoption throughout the county so we can make ourselves available for these grants.
This plan is written by FEMA?
No, the plan is written by the committee, which I'm a part of, and that it's put together by the Polis Center at IUPUI.
Okay.
They do the fine tuning and prepare the documents for completion.
It's kind of managed by the Boone County Emergency, the EMA, and then we have a representative there with Chief Bats, and I go sometimes too, so.
Are there any funds necessary for allocation?
I'm sorry?
Are there any funds necessary for the allocation of the resolution?
No. No, this is all handled through EMA.
So if, how much money is available through FEMA if something were to happen? I mean, we know how fast FEMA moves.
I do not have that information. That would be based upon the need resulting from the disaster. Did that answer your question?
I guess. I just don't see, I mean, if we vote against this, I mean, what, how's it hurt us?
If you vote against this, then Boone County as a whole cannot apply for FEMA grants during a disaster.
So if there was a disaster and we haven't adopted the Hazard Mitigation Plan, then we're no longer eligible for those, for that funding, right? So let's say, for example, the cities in North Carolina and all that stuff, right? If they didn't have a valid All-Hazard Mitigation Plan on file with FEMA, they're gonna be out of luck.
You're telling me the federal government wouldn't step in anyway and try to save?
That's, this is them stepping in, is making sure they have these plans.
Just making a point, so.
So this is very similar to, let's say, run reporting for the fire service. We have
to send the state our reporting and have to meet criteria with our run reporting and submit it to the state so we can apply for assist firefighter grants. So it's very similar to that.
Did I hear you correctly that you said there's other municipalities that have to sign on to this? Did I misunderstand?
Yes.
Are they on board?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. This is a joint committee that has parties and ties across Boone County. Everyone is represented and had input into this plan.
Any further questions for Chief Bats? Any public comment concerning Resolution 2018-32? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-32.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2018-32.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2018-32 passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, chief.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Next item up is a food and beverage funding request concerning the Brownfield Grant Match Program. I'll have Derek Warren kind of explain to this and why this request is coming for the full council.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to explain the request tonight. The Brownfields grant, I don't know how many of you are familiar with what we've been doing over the last almost four years with this money, but back in 2014, specifically July 2nd, 2014, the city made an application to the EPA for a $400,000 Brownfield grant, Brownfields grant, sorry. And that allows, that allowed us to test, do Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing and further site investigations if needed for commercial properties here in Lebanon. This application was made by the previous director of the Planning and Zoning Department, Charlie Campbell, and the previous mayor, Mayor Huck Lewis. And I will tell you that one of the very first meetings that we had with the new administration, Mayor Gentry, myself, and the Chicago EPA Deputy Director, came down and had a face-to-face meeting with the two of us and slapped our wrists a little bit because up until that point, we hadn't spent any money. It had kind of just been sitting there. And he explained to us how important it was for us to start being a little bit more active in finding properties to test. They hang their hat on the people they report to with the amount of testing that is done in local jurisdictions so that the properties can be reused. Brownfields is all about identifying sites that have been contaminated for one reason or another, getting them cleaned up and getting them reused. So the first step in any commercial transaction these days is a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 testing. Phase 1 environmental test is a very high-level 30,000-foot test that identifies past users, any contamination that could be visible, such as asbestos wrapping on piping, you know, just a very general walkthrough. And if warranted because of past users, you can get into a Phase 2 environmental test, which is boring samples, water samples, a more thorough scientific research into the property to find out where contamination is, if there's contamination, has the contamination spread. So as I said, the application was made to the EPA on July 2nd, 2014. The date it was awarded to the city was September 18th, 2014. The total amount awarded was $14,000. Was not aware because of where I came into the picture.
Wait, Derek, 14,000?
I'm sorry. $400,000, sorry. $400,000, yeah. Missed a couple zeros there and added a 1, sorry. Lot of information here I'm trying to look at. So $400,000 was awarded from the EPA. At the time the application was made, the city pledged $15,000 to be eligible for the $400,000. So that was found because the final invoices are coming in this month. The grant period was from basically 10/1 of '14 to 9/30 of '17. Because of kind of how far behind we were with getting into this, we were able to apply for a year extension for the grant period, which gave us until actually this Sunday, 9/30/18, to complete spending the money with, in testing. So as the final bills were coming in, ATC, our contractor, sent the final bills and said, here's the rest of it for the 400 and the $15,000 that the city pledged. And I was kind of like, oh, you know, don't know about the 15. I've always heard 400, 400. And my fault for not, I guess, looking at the application when I got my hands on it. I came into the picture here on the Brownfields of December of 2015. So as the previous administration was kind of leaving, this is one of the things that I was briefed on for about 10 seconds and said, here you go. So I kind of knew what it was, but I didn't know what the contract looked like. So my fault for not knowing that the city pledged $15,000. But nonetheless, they did. In the application, Mayor Lewis signed and agreed to pay $15,000. So to give you an idea of what we've done since December 1st of '15, we have done about 17 Phase 1 tests with about a $5,000 average, it varies, and 10 Phase 2 environmental tests with about a $30,000 average, five further site investigations, which is about another $10,000 average per study, and four comfort letters. And a comfort letter is basically a letter that we can file for a deed restriction against the property. And deed restriction is kind of a scary term, but basically it, usually what you get when you end up with a comfort letter issued is it says something like, you know, groundwater not suitable for human consumption. So you, you know, if Keith, you got thirsty and you wanted to, you know, quench your thirst at the Estes site over here, you probably shouldn't drink the puddle of water sitting by the Downs Vow, is basically what that means. And it also means, you know, you shouldn't, you shouldn't drill a well ultimately, is what it really means, to use groundwater. So it really doesn't apply to city properties because, you know, you can't, you can't do a well within city limits anyway, so you're gonna be on city utilities. So, you know, some of the other restrictions that come out of a comfort letter are if the property or the site is reused and during demolition, you find something that wasn't found during the further site investigation or Phase 2, you need to identify, you need to get ahold of IDEM, let them know, and then they can help you deal with it. You know, this became a really good incentive for us to offer to people who are either selling their property or even potential purchasers of properties, because, you know, as I said here, it can add up to $35,000, $40,000, $50,000 for investigations, just to find out if the site is contaminated or not. So it became a good tool for the planning department to use for the community. Probably the shining star of why this was good for us to have is a couple of them, actually. The Phase 1 and Phase 2, we completed at the former Holiday Inn site, and contamination was found. There was an old gas station on the southwest corner of that site. So if you, if you come in the entrance off of 39, there was a weird kind of elevation change off to your right, and there sat an old gas station once upon a time. And the tanks leaked and they found some petroleum contamination. Because we did the Phase 1 and Phase 2 on that property, IDEM had a grant available for cleanup. So we were, as a city, we were able to apply for that grant from IDEM and have the site remediated. So the site is a clean site now as it sits because of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing that was done out of this grant. The Phase 1, Phase 2, and the site cleanup well exceeds the $15,000 that we pledged. So, I mean, that alone pays, is gonna pay for itself. The other property that comes to mind is the Conservation Club. We were able to pay for all the testing for the purchase of the Conservation Club and the research of that to find out where the contamination was and how to deal with it. So the city saved a lot of money there by being able to use the EPA's money. So the electrochemical buildings have all been tested. The Montgomery Ward Building downtown has been tested. The Prairie Industries Site over on Patterson Street has been tested. The old Stuart Warner Site on East, West South Street has been tested, and several others. You know, the language or the test results are only good for a certain period of time, so some of these, if they do end up selling, somebody will have to come back in and renew what we've already done. But the groundwork's already laid for many of these properties. And due to the success of the money that was available and us spending the money, it has unlocked the door for us to apply for more grant money. I was a little hesitant on whether or not to do that because it was a challenge to spend $400,000. And the way that was split up was $200,000 was for hazardous testing and $200,000 was for petroleum testing. The hazardous testing was easy. I mean, almost anything applies for that. The petroleum testing was a little bit more of a challenge to spin. A lot of these property owners would rather bury their head in the sand than find out what kind of contamination they have because they're afraid of, you know, what will have to happen to deal with it. And the EPA's been very, very clear. Let's just find out what's there. We're not coming after anybody. We just want, we just want knowledge to be known. We just want people to find out what's there. In many cases, some of the white whales, so to speak, that are still out there that I'd like to get tested, this grant money will actually pay for tank removals if it's there. They have to remove tanks to be able to test underneath it. And tank removal's a big deal with the remediation part of it. So again, going back a little bit, with the success that we had spending the money, Fred Bartman, the EPA rep up in Chicago, is super excited that we were able to do that. I met with him back in June, and I have given him a few of these success stories that he's using to take to his superior, to prove that this, this is a good thing. You know, there's been a lot of talk in DC to kind of reduce some of the funding that's out there for these programs like this. But they're really fighting to keep that money around. And Lebanon, even though we're a small blip on the map and this $400,000 is small potatoes compared to some of the other communities, even in the state, that got grants, is still a shining star of our success. So we're actually going to probably, we're in the process right now of determining whether we're gonna apply for another round of it. It'll probably be a little bit smaller, and we may just keep it on the hazardous side so we have, you know, kind of an easier path to spin. Nonetheless, that's a little history of kind of what we've been working on over the last, really, two and a half years, even though it's been around a little bit longer than that. So with that, we found out again about the $15,000. So I'm here tonight to ask for that to be taken from somewhere. Food and beverage was thrown out there. When I found out about this, I did go down to the clerk treasurer's office. I worked with Mia and Tanya to find out if the, at that time when the application was made, Charlie and Huck made a presentation to the council, determined a line to take that from originally, and we weren't able to find anything. We weren't able to find it in the minutes. You know, I even still talk to Charlie from time to time. He didn't recall coming to the council to ask for anything. So to our knowledge, that money was never set aside. I mean, if it was, it certainly hasn't been spent. So it's lost, and we just kind of need to re-appropriate where that money's gonna come from.
And probably the reason we asked for food and beverage is from the timeline perspective as well. You wanted to touch, I mean, you said this Sunday is when it's due, right?
Yep, yep. Sunday is when the bills, invoices need to be paid, so, and they're sitting down on Mia's desk right now. So she has, and the way this works is the $400,000, you go through that first, and then you go through the local funding. So Mia, I believe, I'd have to confirm it, but I think she's paid out of the ASAP system. I can't tell you what that acronym stands for. Get paid ASAP, probably, as soon as possible, has been taken out. We just are holding back the remaining invoices to satisfy the 15, to keep us in good graces with the application that we made back in 2014.
So, long story short, we're looking to, for funds that we can act on quickly with this. It was not budgeted, was not really something on our radar till we came into, you know, recently. So, I mean, we thought food and beverage would be a possibility for this, just based on the fact that we have already appropriated those funds and have not, has not been appropriated really much this year. So for those doing math at home, it's a 3.75% match of the $400,000. So I will tell you that we definitely used this money and used it well to benefit the community. And I think we're, it's because of that, we've made actually quite a few projects happen and a lot of things that are actually still in the works as well too because of this project. So I think we definitely had a great return on this investment from the EPA and the city. So any questions or comments for Derek or discussion?
I want to thank Derek for, for all the information, because I was curious of what, what all happened with the work and so forth. And so glad to hear that we've got a lot done for our, by you. And I hope you apply again.
Yeah.
There's more out there, I'm sure, that need to be looked at. I know it's kind of out of the unusual, but I would approve, I would make a recommendation that we go ahead and approve the 15 out of food and beverage for this time, just for this, get this funding done now.
Can I hold off on the motion until we have further discussion? I know, let's hold off on that. Is that all right? Do you have a comment, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I remember the $400,000 for the EnvireCam was a, was a big deal at the time when they moved out and the potential major problems that could have been there. So, I mean, as far as the $15,000, it was in the, probably in the fine print or something like that. So, but, as money well spent, we got a lot out of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we did. There's some things that we know now, and there's some things that we still have to deal with. But the EPA's made it very clear, if we continue to be successful in this, you know, if and when money becomes available for actually cleanup, we will be right there at the top of the list because we've been proactive in doing these studies.
Spend 15 and get 400?
Yeah.
That's a good...
Yeah, I'd invest 15 to get 400 back any day of the week.
Yeah.
Yeah, normally it's an 80/20 match, right? So this is a 92.75 to, or whatever the number is. So, any further discussion from council? Any public comment concerning this?
No, I guess not.
Okay. Dick, I take your motion now, too, if you'd like.
I'll make a motion that we approve the $15,000 out of food and beverage to go towards the Brownfield Grant Match.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the funding request. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those for discussion? All those who have a say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Brownfield Grant, or the funding request has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. That concludes what I have on my agenda for new business. Anything from council? from council?
Yes, sir.
Any public comment? Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion concerning the claims.
I'll make a motion we pay claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, claims are approved, and we entertain a motion adjourned. So moved. We have a motion adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be October 9th, which actually is a Tuesday in the course of Columbus Day. Thanks for watching. October 9th.